Welcome to this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. The types of business that occur at these meetings include public hearings, official voting on actions by the Board of Commissioners, presentations by departments of the county, and recognition of service that makes our county great. As your elected representatives, the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners is committed to improving the lives of all our residents while preparing county government to meet the demands of the future. In order to do that, we need to share our thoughts and plans with you. More importantly, we need you to share your thoughts, concerns, and opinions with us. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings. They occur every first and third Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM at the St. Clair County Administration Building at 200 Grand River Avenue in Port Huron.
We'll call the meeting of St. Clair County Board of Human Services Committee meeting to order. I'd like to have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Samasco?
Here.
Commissioner Tomian?
Here.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Here.
Commissioner Bone?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Commissioner Greathop?
Here.
Commissioner Riley?
Here.
Do we all stand for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any additions or deletions, changes to the agenda?
I'll make a motion that we accept the agenda as presented. Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Citizens to be heard. Any citizens to be heard tonight? Okay, moving on. Updates? Item A is Medical Examiner 2012 Annual Report.
Please.
Okay, the only comment I have myself on that one is I'd like to see when they, you know, when I went through mine, I'd like to see if we couldn't maybe for better quality and maybe showing possibly some colored graphs instead of, you go through, I mean, they're pretty close to all the same and if you're really looking, I mean, some are gray and some are, you know, it's not the best quality.
I think it's really difficult for us retirees to discern those colors.
The original wasn't color, it's the copy or the three guys are copying it.
Okay, is there, I mean, I don't know, if we can do something?
Or they can do crosshatches and dots or something like that, but even online it was in black and white this time. We'll see.
Yeah, they provided me just one copy of the scan.
Yeah, if we could maybe mention it to them, if they could do something better than next round for us, it'd be better as Mr. Tomian said, you know, some of us are getting older and we need to refer it to you, Carl.
Yes, I understand.
Okay. I have a motion to accept that Medical Examiner 2012 report.
So moved. And support it?
All in favor?
Aye.
Conceptual initiatives?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. New business. Item A, proclamation recognizing veterans' travel memorial final action.
I'd make the motion.
Second motion to send it to the full board. Oh, no, that's final action, I'm sorry. Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next item, health space software purchase, Health Department.
I'll make a motion, we send it on to the full board. Support.
I'm Steve Demick, I'm Health Director, if you have any questions.
You're right. Any questions at all for tonight? Oh, that's pretty easy.
No, I'm easy.
Thank you. Okay, was that supported?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next is Department of Human Services Board Appointment.
I'll move that this item be sent on to the full board meeting.
I'll support.
Move and support it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, other human service matters. I have one that I'd just like to update from a May 17th, I was at the Health Department with Amy Smith and Detective Kelsey Wade from St. Clair County. They were in process of, you know, we had a fundraiser basically that was through the breakfast, emergency management breakfast, and at that time, the money was, half that money went toward the car seat program for St. Clair County. That particular day, they were installing car seats and people that required them and needed them. They also explained to people how they fit and there was some corrections on some people not using their car seats properly. Between Detective Wade and Amy, I thought it was fantastic, the getting the kids to go along with the program as Kelsey was putting them into cars and seating them and that, I thought it was very well, very well done by them and also it showed that fundraiser money went the proper way and it really, it went back to the citizens in our community and our county. So I thought that was very nice and I just wanted to let you know about that. Item nine, information only, Health Department update, point of interest made 2013.
I'd make the motion to receive and file information inside of A through B.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and item 10, receive and file packets.
I move we receive and file packets pertaining to the Human Services issues.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion for adjournment.
Move we adjourn.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Judiciary Public Safety Committee meeting to order. Clerk would take the role, please.
Commissioner Samasco?
Here.
Commissioner Tomian?
Here.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Here.
Commissioner Bone?
Here.
Commissioner Riley?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Commissioner Greathop?
Here.
Additions and deletions to the agenda, we have one in there, we could get a motion to make two A become seven D.
So moved.
Motion and support, any discussion? Then the fiscal year 2013 Community Corrections Contract Amendment will become item 7D under new business. Motion to accept the agenda then?
I move that we accept the amended agenda.
Support.
Motion support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Are there any citizens who wish to address the Judiciary and Public Safety Committee? Hearing none? Any updates? Any commissioners?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
I gave some information out to all the commissioners and it really surrounds the agreement regarding Clay Township and the dispatch and the PSAP, as many of you are aware of. Ira Township has chose to move their police contract over to Clay Township and I saw as part of Clay Township's proposal that there was also a shift in the funding for their 911 funds over there as part of their formula. And I know when we did this at the time, there was a piece of it that was attached to bond repayment and I think we just need some clarification. I'd like corporate counsel to take a look at the agreement, try to figure out which piece of it goes to the bonding piece of it and which piece would go to the others because I know there's been some other recent rulings from the Michigan Public Service Commission and things, so I need a little bit more hallmark clarification on some things. You've got some numbers in your packet today as far as dispatch and call volumes and that stuff and Gary, I talked to you briefly about it before and just...
Do you have a question here, Bill? Yes. Could you also take a look if you think it's appropriate, if the other board members think it's appropriate? You know, our Dispatch Authority Board has individuals on it that may be associated with the other PSAP or this whole process. Are there any conflicts of interest for positions in our current board, you know, for those managing this other, call it competitive or what it is? I'd like to look at that, see if there's any conflict of interest on it.
Just get an understanding on the whole thing. I mean, I know we signed this thing, I've been on the board eight and a half years and Howard, you're around the time Howard and I are probably the sole survivors from back then and to be able to get some more of the information regarding all that stuff and report back whether it's the bonding piece of it to them, on top of the above.
Because the board's governed by statute, correct? The who else was on the board, who serves on that board, I think it's statutory?
Now, it's because we didn't end up setting up a statutory entity and sub minus boards.
All right.
Howard? I would just like to comment, you know, I was on the board 10 years ago and shortly after 9/11, we had, I think, every fire department, every police department, Tom, you were on the board then?
Yes.
Before us, saying you've got to do something, we can't communicate.
Right.
And we heard all kinds of stories. I think the one that made an impression on me was the fire department in St. Clair, in St. Clair Township, had to send runners between their two departments if they were both at a fire. That's how poor the communications was back there. Here we are, almost 10 years later, and it's like, my opinion, some of these people have forgotten the investment we've made as a county. We put almost $13.5 million in expenditures for this. Now, we didn't have to bond for some of that, the federal government helped us out with grants and the like, but I think our bonding was still around seven or eight million. And, you know, we have that obligation and if they bail, you know, I want to make sure we're made whole.
I think that's something we have talked about and I think Gary's going to look at that for us.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely.
I have another comment I'd like to make too while we're on this. I'm a little surprised that both police and fire down there, they want to go with another agency for the law enforcement, that's up to them. But the problem I look at is from a safety aspect for the citizens that are down in those communities as well as the ones that are passing through those communities. And what I mean by that is if people that are familiar with the fire side of the business, if you have a structural fire and it's called into the 911 system, you can say, well, that can be fixed so it can go to their towers down there, but if it gets to our tower up here or goes to them and it's our call because of the conflicting areas down there, that means that that has to be relayed to the other agency and then they do the tone-up. If anybody that's in the medical field knows that you have, it's always been kind of a five-minute rule as far as it comes to heart attacks, et cetera, that you can, our dispatchers in St. Clair County are all trained to do CPR over the phone. Whether Clay is that set up that way, I don't have any idea, but what I do know is that you have a limited time on a call like this to be able to actually get to the person, take care of them. And if you're relaying, and I don't care if it's 30 seconds or a minute or a minute and a half between St. Clair County to Clay or Clay to St. Clair County or to Richmond, PD, whoever, it doesn't matter, when you start relaying through relay systems, you're risking, you're messing with people's lives. Fires on the other side of the business, on the fire department side, if a structured fire comes in or some kind of a fire comes in every 30 seconds roughly, it's an estimate, you will get BTU doubles in those. Not necessarily the involvement of the stuff around you because that depends on what kind of equipment you have, what kind of furniture, what kind of, what are you messing with in your room that you got your structure fire? But every time it doubles in BTU, you've got more opportunity for more damage and potentially. I think what they're doing down there, as far as I'm concerned, if they want to go with another police agency, well, that's up to them. But when they're messing with people's lives in their community, and I'm referring to all the communities down in Clay and the Ira and who they're handling, I think they're fooling with people's lives. I think it's an unsafe thing they're doing and it's not because I'm trying to keep everything under the sheriff or under St. Clair County, but they are going to create a problem down there that is going to be major. This is something, I just see our new marine officer come in, got the same thing on the water down there. We have issues on the water, it has been issues for the last couple of years down there. Got the same situation there. You have life, people, property involved in this and I think that somebody better sit back and take a good look at what's going on and not, stop worrying about the political end of it, stop worrying about the dollars and cents, let's look at the big picture. And they're not doing that down there.
Thank you, Commissioner Riley. Any other updates?
Just one.
Commissioner Heidemann?
At our meeting with legislators the other day, I had a chance to talk to Senator Stabenow's representative from the area, Ellen Fosney? Nate?
Ellen Fosney.
Anyway, I asked him because I had talked to the sheriff earlier about the fact that he's trying to get a medical contract to provide services, medical services for incarcerated rees and it's somewhere around a million dollars a year because so many of our incarcerated rees do not have insurance. And I asked him if the new Medicaid would change that and he did some research and called the people in Washington and unfortunately, it doesn't help us now, but in 2017, states will be allowed to apply for a new type of Medicaid waiver called the 1115A waiver. And that is different from the current waivers and would allow states to waive the inmate exception clause under section 1905, which means they would be covered.
2017?
2017. I know it's a long time away, but it's coming.
Appreciate the update. Any other updates? I just have one short one. I see that Lieutenant Paul Reed is in the audience. Paul, if you would just kind of maybe stand, wave your hand. Paul is the new Marine Division Commander for the Marine Division of St. Clair County Sheriff.
Excuse me, Bill, why don't we have him come on up?
Well, we have to approve him tonight.
Oh.
So I'm a little ahead of things right here, but in case he slips out, I want you to know, take around, look at him. So if you're out on the water and this guy's waving at you, you better stop and do what he tells you to do. Does he have any law enforcement experience? He does have a lot of law enforcement experience.
He's got it.
He's done a lot of good things, believe me, so I had a chance to meet him the other day and I'm glad he's here tonight, so. Okay, apparently that's all the updates, conceptual initiatives, Mr. Kaufman?
Nothing this evening.
Nothing, okay. Under old business, I have nothing. Under new business, item A, proclamation recognizing Lieutenant Graham Romo for 42 years of police service. This is for final action. Graham is a lieutenant, detective lieutenant with the Clay Township Police Department. He is retiring after 42 years of service. He will be having a going away party on the 29th, I think, of June, somewhere around there, and anybody's welcome to attend, but we have a proclamation for him.
I move that...
I move that the proclamation be approved.
Opposed? And support it? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. I will take that proclamation with me tonight and deliver it to them. I'll attend the party. I don't like parties, but I will attend this one. Order?
Yep.
Commissioner Heidemann, order?
All right, moving on to seven B, 2011 Operation Stone Garden Grant Agreement.
You have all the paperwork in front of you. If you have any questions?
I'll move that this Stone Garden Grant Agreement be placed on the full board agenda.
Support that.
I have a motion to support to send it on to the full board. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 7C, Marine Safety Grant Agreement Final Action.
I move the 2013 Marine Safety Grant Agreement for final action.
Support.
All right, I have a motion and a support. This is for final action, gentlemen, and my question is, it was due no later than May 31st, which has since passed, but I would assume that we do have a small grace period?
Yes.
Okay, so that's why it's in there. It has been cut back a little bit. Every year it seems to be cutting back more and more and if I read through the paperwork correctly and was able to discern what it said, it seems like you use a three-year average in there somewhere. So every year you reduce this a little bit and then you use that year plus the two previous years, it tends to bring it down every year and we've got to find a way to sustain this thing or get it back up because we probably have more water to patrol than any place else in the state of Michigan when it comes to miles of patrolling that we need to do along with an international border. And yet we are reducing our marine budget. I'm off my soapbox now, anyway. So anyway, that's all I wanted to say. For final action, I have the motion ready? Okay, roll call then.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Bone?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Greathop?
Yes. Moving on to item 7D, which is the Community Corrections Grant Agreement. It was not on your original list and we had to pick up that paperwork and add it in. It was at your place tonight and I see that Jerry Sommer is here. If there are any questions about this particular piece, Jerry, why don't you come up anyway? Let us know because there was a cut from the state. They just kind of, can I use the word arbitrarily? Cut it? Is that long-term?
Good evening. This is an amendment to the current year Community Corrections Grant. Each year I come before you and ask you to approve the grant for community corrections and typically, one of you asks me, well, is that going to be the same amount next year? And I've been able to say up till now, yes. Unfortunately, this is an amendment that reduces our current year budget by $73,000. Our current budget is 261 and now it'll be 187. The Department of Corrections found themselves in a position where they basically needed to, their words are conserve their surpluses. There's been on a statewide basis, surpluses in the overall grant funding over the past several years and essentially, they've come to rely on those. And this current year, they needed to bring those back home before the end of the fiscal year. So they really reduced the overall appropriation statewide to a total of $1.8 million. Our portion is $73,000. They used an average of surplus funds over the past couple of years to kind of arrive at a formula that gave us that amount. The impact for us is, well, some of it, about half, we were able to absorb with administrative line items and such. The remainder affected two programs. One is the RSAT Residential Substance Abuse Program, but we've been able to work that, we, the scrap contributes only a portion of the total for the contract services that we get with that and we've been able to work with Community Mental Health and their funding that they contribute and better coordinate that. So I don't see that as being something we can't absorb. In other words, we won't see anybody who is authorized for the program who are have to say, no, you can't participate. The other program that it does affect though is day reporting and that is simply going to not be funded by the state. And, you know, we've simply had to close out the dollars for that in order to meet the $73,000. I've talked to Carrie and I, Carrie Hefting, and I think part of the amendments tonight will deal with the county, essentially, the recommendation will be to absorb the cost of that program, about $25,000 on an annual basis. So the amendment is to the current year contract and needs to be approved in order to continue at least at that level, so.
Jerry, any chance of getting any of this money back in the future?
Not likely. If there's good news at all is that the 2014 budget will be no less than what we're looking at, at the reduced level. In other words, the 187,000, so. And that's in the state budget that was processed last week.
All right. What, any questions for Jerry Sommer? Jerry, thank you very much for coming. We have a motion to send this on to the full board?
I would so move.
And? Support? Support? Motion support? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any other judiciary or public safety matters? Hearing none? I have no information only. I'm ready to receive and file.
I move we receive and file packets pertaining to judiciary and public safety matters?
Support? Motion and support? All in favor?
Aye.
Move we adjourn?
Support.
Motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Need to adjourn.
I'd like to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Environmental and Public Works Committee meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you take the role?
Commissioner Samasco?
Here.
Commissioner Tomian?
Here.
Commissioner Bone?
Here.
Commissioner Riley?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Commissioner Greathop?
Here.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Here. Any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
No move?
Second by Mr. Riley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carry. We have an agenda. Any citizens to be heard? Seeing no citizens to be heard, we have updates in our packet. We have one from the Road Commission, Department of Public Works regarding the wastewater treatment plant bar screen project, Grant S2 Grant. We have one on the Connected Community Engagement Program Certification and we also have one on the Airport Consult Mead Hunt. And I see Kathy here tonight. There any questions? I'm sure she would. Commissioner Greathop?
On the wastewater treatment plant, I just want to bring it to the public's attention that there will be a public hearing, 7 o'clock on June 18th at the Ira Township Hall. If you are interested in attending that, it's 7 o'clock, June 18th at the Ira Township Hall.
This is connecting the community with broadband.
I'm Lori Ashenberg and I've seen you guys many times before. Last year, it came to me that, it came down from the Board of Commissioners that you guys wanted to improve broadband access in St. Clair County because we know that there's places in the county where there isn't good access, so I was asked to start a committee to address that issue and through 2009 stimulus funds, there was a group called Connect the Nation and under that is Connect Michigan. So we had heard, actually Tiffany heard about this at some time. So I started a broadband committee through the, with the Planning Commission and Connect Michigan has been very helpful and after a year, we have achieved certification, so I just want to tell you quickly what that entails. The committee was made up of healthcare and IT professionals from St. Clair County Community College, the county, and RISA, also the library, chamber of commerce, law enforcement, local minis- Also, the library, Chamber of Commerce, law enforcement, local municipalities, central dispatch, EDA, and then broadband service providers were also in the room. And our first meeting was March 2012. So we spent a year gathering data for the assessment. And members all in their respective areas gave us the information. And we connected, or we collected information such as broadband speeds throughout the county, the number of service providers in our county, digital literacy classes offered, which the library really helped in that, vulnerable populations, access to broadband and programs, websites available to conduct business and government, access to education with broadband, and access to healthcare with broadband. So after all that year, we have enough points to become certified, which is great. But that means that we still have some issues that we have to work on. So we have an action plan, and that's what our task is moving forward. We had 14 recommendations for our action plan, and the committee has chose, have chosen six to have make a priority. And quickly, those six are: conduct surveys to determine gaps in coverage, meaning identify the problem areas. And there's some in Cotreville, and there's some in the northern part of the county. And work with the service providers to determine how to solve those problems, and then complete a vertical assets inventory. And those three together, in our GIS system, SEMCOG got a grant, and we have some great data. We got building footprints, and we have a height on those, and we have our parcel layer. So we can, if we have an area that has broadband issues, we can find the tallest structure in the area and then work with the service providers to put some type of equipment on that to boost the signal. So that's what our committee is doing. The fourth point was develop public-private partnerships and work together. And St. Clair County has a good record of doing that. And support the Technology Task Force team to train small and medium rural businesses to leverage broadband. So we're also really focusing on helping small businesses to use broadband because in Michigan last year, there were 17.1 million transactions online. In Michigander spent 1.1 billion online last year, and we want a piece of that. And our sixth was pursue next-generation 911 upgrades, which you heard about earlier because our system is aging. So I just wanted to tell you about that. And also a statistic that we're the third county in Michigan to receive the certification and the sixth in the nation. And they gave us a plaque. So we have one for the Board of Commissioners, wherever you want to put it, whatever room you'd like to put it in. And we also got a nice trophy, and I was asked to share this with you so you know that we're the sixth in the nation and the third in the state. Any questions?
Very good job.
Very nice.
Thank you.
In an earlier report, you mentioned something about the impact of broadband on educational achievement. What's that?
Students with access to broadband get higher ACT scores. And kids do better in school if they have broadband at home. So we have statistics to prove that. And right now, our county is 90 percent, 97 percent covered, 3 megabytes download or better per second. And 86 percent of our county has 10 megabytes per second download. But even though we have basically good coverage throughout our county, we have some problem areas. So we're doing well, but we have our action plan that tells us what we need to fix. So we're not quite there yet, but we're working on it.
Hey, thank you, Lauren.
Thank you.
I got just one funny story. Pat Anger was on the board back when I got on it, and I sent her a document. It was like a 200-page document. And she had dial-up. I had taken her photo for like six hours. I didn't even, I didn't know any better. And she was like, "Don't ever send me..."
Or aerial photos?
She lived in Clydesdale.
Yeah, she was in Clydesdale.
It's not that far off.
Yeah.
Times have changed in a few short years. Okay. Kathy, did you want to comment on that?
I just wanted to take a minute to update you. One of the requirements through the FAA for the, for us to accept the airport grant, improvement grant monies that we receive is that we must have professional airport consultant services along with each contract itself. So every five years, they ask us to reevaluate that process to make sure that everything is up in order. So our request for qualifications was developed through our airport five-year improvement plan, approved by the Office of Aeronautics. The process, we went through the advertisement process. The selection was based on the qualifications. No money whatsoever because each one of the services go through with each contract and the level of service that we receive from each consultant. We did receive two interested parties, QOE Consulting and Mead and Hunt, both from Lansing. These proposals were reviewed and approved by MDOT. And it is approved that Mead and Hunt will remain our airport consultants through their, for the airport grants, for the airport grant projects only. So these are just projects for each project that MDOT has. So I just wanted to update you on that so that you understood that we were, that we reviewed it and we're happy with Mead and Hunt, and that's where we're going to stand. So I don't know if you have any questions?
Any questions for Kathy?
Commissioner...
I have a question. We had the presentation previous as far as the funding. Currently today, it's 95 percent federal, 2.5 percent state, 2.5 percent local. When is the funding going to change? Correct me if I'm wrong, it's going to be a...
It changed in March. So it's changed now. So the projects I have to you tonight are 5 percent locally.
5 percent locally?
5 percent.
So it's a, is it, it's a... So it's the 95 percent, the state?
5 percent for the state, 5 percent for us, yeah.
And I know there's a sliding scale, not that it's going to eventually be 90-10? Correct me if I'm wrong.
I think the state is, the state is going to get out of it in 2015, if I remember your last report.
Yep.
And it will be 90-10. So we've gone from paying 2.5 percent to 5 percent to 10 percent by 2015.
Yes.
Wonderful.
Yeah. So anyway, I just wanted to update, update you on that. Do you have any questions?
Any other questions from commissioners? Seeing none, thank you, Kathy. Commissioners, have any updates regarding environmental and public works matters? Seeing none? Any conceptual initiatives for...
I have something.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, it could be updates, conceptual initiatives, whatever. You have a handout from Cotreville Township. And what it really revolves around is the garbage. We brought Jim Logston in, as many of you know, sometime to help with not only landfill, but some different recommendations, possible solutions, so on and so forth. And one of the things that he talked before about was actually hiring via through your hauling contracts just to have somebody do the pickup piece of it. And then the county, then just the county would direct bill you. So separate the two. Currently today, when you have a waste contract, it's all, you know, one. And Jim had explained how, you know, where the percentage is at and potential cost savings and so on and so forth. So I had spoke with a couple of different municipalities at the time when they were in their process of rebidding, and it was a little, they weren't sure on it, you know, at the time. And then Cotreville came up, and I talked to the supervisors down there, and they said they would be willing to do that. So they went out for this bid, and they've got a copy of the bid. They were spending roughly $170,000 a year on their total trash collections. Currently, the new bid that they have is roughly 136, give or take. So a huge savings. And Jim always had said there would be probably a 15 percent, 15 to 20 percent possible reduction because of these factors. Like he could, he knows that he'd take an hour to explain it to you. But they went through this process. They haven't awarded the contract yet. Even from their existing hauler, they had seen a, you know, roughly 5 percent reduction in by doing that. So it's something that I'm going to take this to the rest of the township folks and the city folks as we get an opportunity to tell us. We, like I said, we had, we had presented before when we had the, with the, with the city folks and supervisors when we were doing some of the other things. But I commend them for going through this process. And actually, one of the possible bidders is somebody you know, they're Steve Jeff.
Jeff's rubbish.
Yeah. Yeah, it was good. I give him a lot of credit. So just a little... It's amazing when you hire those consultants, you might learn something from them.
And not only helping the county, but also helping out our townships if it assists them in saving dollars.
Percentage-wise, it's huge.
They're working on pretty small margins, anyway.
I always tell people, you need to listen to people you retain for services.
Okay. No other items on that? Any old business? Seeing none? New business? The first item is the MDOT agreement for rehabilitation of the taxiway, South Hanger area design. Kathy, your background?
This contract is for the, as Commissioner Heideman said, is for the taxiway, the South Hanger area. This is for the design only. I apologize for the date that's on this, and I have held on to it due to the fact that the funding had not transferred. I could have brought it to you earlier, but without the funding, it was not worth our time. So the funding has been transferred for the design itself and for the project itself. So with a little luck, we can get the pro, get the design rolling, and we can still get the project done yet this summer. So I may be bringing that, the actual construction contract quite early. This is the same ways that you had talked before. It is 90 percent federally funded, 5 percent state, and 5 percent local. So the local share will come from the industrial park trust fund, the sales of the industrial park as in the previous. With your approval.
Kathy, I'm not familiar with the Air Industrial Park Trust Fund. What is that?
Was it '99 or 2000? We got a land release from the state of Michigan to keep one side of the industrial park, which there's 80 acres in the industrial park, one side to keep that late, to keep that leased parcels, and the other side to start selling them. Once we could sell them, that money we could use for things such as this. It can't be used for operation, daily operations of the airport or anything in that manner. It has to be...
Any property in that group that we sell?
That we actually sell goes into this trust fund. Has to be used for...
Airport development?
Airport development itself. So it's actually worked out really well to keep rolling within these projects, so...
Any idea how much money we have in that trust fund?
Was it seven, 7,000? Right around 7,000.
Okay, thank you.
I'll get that for you.
Some of those lots out there built, too. Some you have the ability to sell, some are lease-only, pipeline easements. There's, those lots have a very different designations, just depending on where you're at out there. Kind of all over the board.
That's good that we have that money to draw from.
It is, but the problem, too, with the reason that they did that was environment, I mean, financially, it's too hard for people to now get, to build a, build a million-dollar building on a piece of leased property. So they're not, they're not fond of loaning on a leased piece of property. So it really works out well.
Okay. Any other questions for Kathy? Seeing none, thank you.
I'll make a motion that we send this on to the full board.
Okay, do we have a second?
Support?
Supported by Commissioner Tomlin. Any other discussion or questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. Thank you. And the next one is the sponsored contract professional engineering services, Mead Hunt for rehabilitating taxiway, South Hanger area design. Kathy?
And this contract, as I said, is affiliated with the state contracts themselves. And it is a requirement. The monies, goes right along with this, the monies go, come from the state, from the contract that you just approved earlier. So with your approval, it's, basically, it just gives us the design process that's required for the taxiway rehabilitation.
I would entertain a motion. I would move to send the professional engineering services for the South Hanger area design project on to the full board as well.
Support?
Supported by Commissioner Greitak. Motion made by Commissioner Tomlin. Any other discussion or questions for Kathy? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried.
And with the funding now being transferred for the actual design, I'm hoping that we can kind of expedite this and still get it done yet this summer. So I'll be back.
We'll have our fingers crossed. Okay. The St. Smiths Creek Landfill Activities Report. Matthew, Matt has ducked out on us here.
I do have a question, though, if somebody else can answer it.
Go ahead, Commissioner Greitak.
Looking at the, I guess it would be the second page of the report, I'm seeing total revenue in the right-hand column for January, February, and March. And then there are fixed numbers that I follow all the way down, except for September. It appears to have a figure already put in it. I'm not sure I'm understanding why 63,000, 65,000, 73,000. I understand all that. And then the $4,000 figures that are plugged in, and then, but September has a $71,000 figure already.
Total revenue?
Yeah, it's on the total revenue column.
Probably, I wouldn't be surprised if it would be the time of the year we receive the, it's either the DTE money or I'm sure, I wouldn't be surprised if it's a royalty payment at that time because we do receive that via through the...
So they've already plugged that in, but we don't have the total revenue? So that, the total revenue then would be added to the 71,000?
That's just me being, making assumptions, and, I mean, there's a $50,000 year Economic Development Fund payment, there is a percentage of certain things. That's just making assumption, but...
Thank you for that.
Does that sound right there, Administrator Kaufman?
Could be.
Good chance, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Motion to, motion to accept?
The landfill report?
Yes.
Second by Commissioner Riley? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. Any other environmental public works matters? None, we have several information-only items in our packet. We have the annual financial report from the Department of Public Works. We have the annual financial report from the Road Commission. We have letter regarding Smiths Creek landfill. We have the MSHDA notice of release of the 2011 CDBG Housing Resources Fund Grant. And we have the park's financial update. I think they're all pretty self-explanatory. Just a lot of reading.
Commissioner Heideman?
Yes.
On the parks report, Visitor Center HVAC unit, which, what is the Visitor Center?
If you go out to Goodell County Park, the Visitor Center is on the north side. If you're familiar where the, the barns are...
The brick building, the brick building that's out there?
Yeah, it's, has restrooms in it, and...
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I would entertain a motion at this time to receive and file packets.
I would move that we receive and file packets for the Environmental Public Works Committee.
We have a second?
Support?
Supported by Commissioner Greitak. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
At this time, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss collective bargaining negotiations and have an adjournment following the...
Not adjournment, but going back to the, coming back to the... Just adjourned. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I would make that motion that we adjourn to executive session and then adjourn the Environmental Public Works Committee meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
I'd like all of this meeting of the St. Clair County Ways and Means Committee together. Could I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Samasko?
Here.
Commissioner Heideman?
Here.
Commissioner Bone?
Here.
Commissioner Riley?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing? Commissioner Greitak?
Here.
Commissioner Tomian?
Here.
Additions and deletions to the agenda? We have, I'm going to die tonight, a proposed travel schedule.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we take the proposed Board of Commissioners 2013 travel meeting schedule and make it 7K under new business.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. In terms of additions, I've received a request this evening from the library that under Agenda Item 7G, that the manning table adjustment be considered for final action at the meeting tonight. So when we get to that, to that item, that's when I'll...
I would move the approval of the agenda with the following changes just mentioned.
I would support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, our updates. Does anybody have an update for Ways and Means this evening?
Did you want to do this for citizens to be heard?
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped over citizens to be heard first. Are there any citizens to be heard? I do have one communication that we indicated to the citizen that we would read into the record, and this is from Chris Volpe, Union Stewart Teamsters Local Two Fourteen. Dear Commissioners, after twenty-five-plus years of working at the juvenile center, I've discovered that working with troubled youths is a lot like planting a garden. It's not enough to just throw seeds into the ground and wait for it to produce. The ground you plant in must be stable and organized. You need to nurture and to tend to the seedlings. You water often and attempt to weed out the negative influences. Missing a step does not guarantee disaster, but will increase the chances of other problems developing. And in the end, with God's help, you reap what you sow. What most do not understand is that often, we are the stable ground. We plant the seed with the hope that someone will nurture it. We attempt to have the plant standing strong before we send it back to the garden. Sometimes, we never know the results, and other times, unfortunately, we do. In closing, we requested very little and got nothing in return. We stood by the county during recent economic hardships, and all we were asking for was a little recognition in exchange. You will not see us at the meeting tonight because we do not seek the spotlight. With this proposed action, you are taking the joy out of gardening. It's important to us that you know we will continue to do what we do because it is who we are. Sincerely, Chris Volpe. Now, I think it's the time for me to ask if there are any updates. Hearing none, Mr. Kaufman, do we have any conceptual initiatives for...
Not this evening.
Old business. Under new business, Item 7A is a resolution implementing the last best offer to the juvenile detention center, Teamsters Two Fourteen, and this is for final action this evening. Could I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. Support.
I have a motion in support. Is this a roll call vote on this? Voice book? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Mr. Heidemann is opposed. Next, we have the Honeywell contract renewal.
Make a motion to send it to the full board.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, do we have any comments you'd like to make tonight?
I can answer questions if you have any questions concerning the contract.
This is actually a renewal of an existing contract that we've had for some time.
We've reduced the coverage significantly in an effort to reduce the costs.
My only question, Ron, is that one year, it's a one-year contract?
It is a current one-year.
Okay, so, only question I have.
Thank you.
Ron, I did, Mr. Chairman, I did ask the question about the local contractors, if they had, if they were involved in this bidding procedure, even though that they hadn't been in the past, and Ron, explain that a little bit, if you want to touch on that.
I think you're, you're going to talk about the chiller maintenance contract that's going to be next, but...
That's correct. I thought I'd get you while you're up there.
Yes, we did, we did reach out to what we thought were vendors large enough to meet the supply needs for our service end, and they did say that they weren't interested in participating, and that they most likely would have requested service from these original main, OEM service reps, had they been asked to service our equipment, so. It did extinguish any locals that were large enough to service our equipment.
Thank you. Any other questions? Are we...
Just moving a full board, so...
Do we have a motion already, Chris? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is the chiller maintenance agreement. This time, I'll try not to ignore the important staff that are here.
Still moved. Support.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Now, we have 7D, the employment agreement for the Michigan Division, I mean, Marine Division Coordinator, Mr. Reed, who's here this evening. I see our sheriff is approaching the podium.
I just wanted to update you that Lieutenant Dennis Maury retired. He had a full career as a lieutenant at Port Huron Police Department, as well as at Chelsea Police Department before coming to Port Huron. He worked four years with us at the sheriff's office, and he was very excited. His, his last child graduated from college and found employment, so he was anxious to hang up the gun and, and go fishing, so we were, we were very happy for Dennis. He did great service for us. We hired Lieutenant Paul Reed, and I will let Paul come to the podium, but he has been with the sheriff's office for the last four years, and before that, had a very long, three years, I'm sorry, but a very long, successful career at Port Huron City, so, Paul.
Commissioners, the sheriff asked me to come and introduce myself to you, for those of you who don't know me. I'm not quite a lifelong resident of Port Huron. I was an Army brat, so in nineteen sixty-five is when I started my residency here, and have been here ever since. Graduated from Port Huron High School. Started my law enforcement career at Port Huron PD in October nineteen seventy-eight, when I was a student at SC Four, and spent thirty-one years there. I was a cadet, worked as an animal control officer for a year before being hired as a police officer. I worked as a detective, as a sergeant, and retired as a lieutenant from Port Huron. It was my work as a detective sergeant where I got to know Sheriff Donlin, when I was in charge of Special Crimes Unit, and we worked closely with the Drug Task Force two thousand and five and two thousand and six. Retired November first, two thousand and nine, from Port Huron, and went to work for Sheriff Donlin in June of two thousand and ten, transporting prisoners for the jail. When I heard that Lieutenant Maury was going to retire, I started bending the sheriff's air that I would really like to get out of the prisoner transport business. Those five hundred gentlemen and ladies in orange are not a lot of fun to hang out with, but, and he was lucky, or, excuse me, I was lucky enough that he let me do that, and here I stand before you today, asking for your support. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, to make a comment. I have dealt with Paul, not, not on the outside, but on the good side, my dad. Over the years, yeah, no, I did have a little, but, great choice, Tim, on picking Paul. Paul will do us a great job. He's a good officer with the city. I dealt with him there, and I think he's going to be well positioned for this job. Good, good position to welcome.
Thank you.
Like Lieutenant Reed said, we worked very closely in narcotics for several years together, got to be a very great professional trust working relationship, and when we had openings in the transport, it's, it's a great retirement job, and when I spoke with our sergeant, Wachowski, about Paul, out of the eighteen slots in the transfers, he was the number-one go-to guy, so it's a loss of transfers, but this is more down his alley with the responsibility, with the budgets and the training and the personnel issues, much of like what he did in Port Huron, where you handled the training budget over there as well. So, we're, we're excited, we're happy for Dennis, and I hated to see Dennis go, but I'll tell you, this is certainly a great move for the sheriff's office to pick up another lieutenant from Port Huron Police, as well as a man that spent three years in the sheriff's office, so he's very comfortable with all the employees, indoctrinated into our system as well.
Any questions?
No. Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion.
I would second it. I think...
I have one comment. I just wanted, just wanted to note for the record that I too spent a lot of time with Paul Reed as prosecutor. And when I started in eighty, eighty-nine, Paul was there and going through the ranks and a lot of what he talked about. I had observed that, he's a very solid officer, very good police officer, basic police skills, got the job done, very credible, always did a great job, so I'm really thrilled that he's going to bring that to the Marine Division. It's law enforcement, it's a different type of law enforcement, but it's great to see that you've got law enforcement professionals selected from this community that can do that, and I'm just thrilled, it'd be a great service to the public, I want to thank the sheriff for that, and, you know, he's had a great zeal in his career as a police officer, and I noticed it was, it was distinctly lacking when he was hanging around with the fellows in orange in the transport division. You just didn't seem to have your heart in it, Paul, I want to say, so I'm glad you moved up. I mean, you had your heart in it, they're all chained up, and they got where they're supposed to go, but I don't think it was the same as, as real hands-on law enforcement, so I'm glad to see you're back in the saddle.
He used to ask me if he could let them go once in a while, so he could chase them down and catch them, but I didn't think that would go over so well. Please don't print that tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Well, we have a motion in support. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Is this for final action?
Yeah, you need to roll the call.
Yes, I'm sorry.
So, whoever made the motion, I assume, made it for final action?
I did.
Thank you.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Bohm?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner Tommy?
Yes. Item seven E is the resolution setting the twenty thirteen summer tax levy.
Make the motion.
Second.
This would be to send this on to the full board. Any discussion?
Quick question. DTF on, second page there, at the very bottom, everything is written down with seniors and library parks. What is DTF?
Drug Task Force.
Jesus.
All right. Thank you. How's that?
Howard Headley, you got any comments over there?
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The next item is the recommendation on the information technology reorganization.
Coming to you tonight to propose a reorganization of the IT department. This is actually something I've been thinking about since, really, the beginning of the year, and I've been spending the year reevaluating how we do business, asking the question, why? Does this make sense? Is this the most efficient way to do, to offer our support to our customers? And we've been experimenting a little bit in our department with, maybe some of you have heard, that we've been doing a four-day work week with some of our staff and experimenting with just some of the duties and, and how we're doing things to make sure that we're really doing the best we can to offer our services. As part of that, in April, I received a resignation from my GIS manager, which presented an opportunity to reevaluate how our department is organized. And I sat down with my team, and we really looked at the skill sets of the department and the tasks, and decided that it would make sense at this time to rearrange some of the tasks and change some job descriptions to fit those tasks a little bit more closely. And in addition to that, I looked at the money we were paying to a consulting company to assist us with some of our advanced network engineering tasks, and felt that if I brought someone in, hired someone onto my staff, that I could save quite a bit of money. And not only could I save money, but I could offer a better level of service, because we're paying our consulting company for about twenty-two hours a week. We hire somebody internally, we'll be getting thirty-seven and a half hours a week. So, in addition to that, I felt like this person that we were, would hire could maybe assist some of the other local communities, and we could recoup some money through some revenues and save some of those local communities that are also consult, using a consulting company. We could offer them a lower rate, offer them the same service, they'd save money, we'd get a little bit of revenue. So, that's what I'm bringing to you tonight. There's, there's some other adjustments. If you look at the organizational chart, we're downgrading the GIS manager position to a GIS analyst. We would like to essentially promote two of our network technicians to a network technician two, to provide a better support level and escalation service for the day-to-day tasks. Few other changes that are basically job realignments and title changes. So, I would request that if this gets approved, that we would be able to post those positions that are vacant or the promotions, as soon as, as soon as this goes through the full board for approval, I'd like to post those immediately after. Any questions?
I have a couple of questions regarding the two new proposed positions and how they would function. Let me see if I understand this correctly. The senior network engineer, which is a new position, they would work with all of the staff people you presently have within your department, plus assist other departments too, if they have issues regarding the setup of their computer systems?
The senior network technician would be an IT staff member, would report directly to me, and, and would work with the other staff members as their support. They would not work with end-users in other departments. They would be essentially behind the scenes, doing advanced network-level support configuration setups, such as firewalls, servers...
Within the constraints of your department.
Correct. But we're also proposing that this person could be offered out to some local communities that are also paying for consulting services, and we could bill those communities for, at an hourly rate, to provide those services to those communities. That's, that's in the cost out that Carrie provided. I'm estimating a conservative figure of about thirteen thousand dollars a year.
Okay, that's on that side of the reorganization. Now, the systems administrator, how would they function then, within this new...
Systems administrator is an existing position. The current person that does that position's title is desktop manager, and that position would now, the, the focus of that position would be more project management-oriented, as well as some server maintenance and day-to-day network maintenance tasks. What we're essentially doing is the network manager and the desktop manager are sort of trading some tasks and realigning their tasks. The, the network manager will now focus on primarily supervisory tasks and supervising the, some of the, directly supervising the employees that currently report to the desktop manager, and the system administrator would take over some of those tasks that the network manager won't have as much time to do, such as day-to-day network maintenance, terminal server support, and project oversight. So, all the projects, in the IT department, typically, we have at least twenty projects going on at any given time, that various people in the department are, are trying to manage. This person would oversee all those projects, make sure those projects stay on task, make sure that they meet the deadlines, make sure they stay within the budgetary goals of the project.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I just got, I'm assuming Bill and Carrie, you guys reviewed everything, and I'm going to jive.
A couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Tiffany, this eighty-seven thousand dollar savings first year, where does that eighty-seven thousand savings draw from, in a general sense?
A large... A large portion of it is from the consulting services. We're currently paying $175,000 a year in consulting services.
And you no longer need consulting services or we never needed consulting services? Why can we make this change? Why is that viable?
Well, my consulting budget is $195,000, so I'm keeping $20,000 for some of the smaller consulting services that I'll still retain. However, the $175,000 goes to one primary company that is providing this network engineer support right now. And so I still need it.
Internalize the network engineers, what you're trying to do.
Exactly. It's a critical element of what our department does and it's very much a needed service, but if I bring it in-house, I can save money.
We did something like that, Bill, with maintenance. We brought the electrical engineer in.
And we've done it out of the landfill with a couple of positions as well.
All right. So that's, the new position replaces this consulting position.
Exactly.
So this $87,000 first year, is it a one-pop deal? We get the 87 or then is there, year after year, what's going to happen? What's your projection there?
Every year, we will have a savings, however, over the course of the years, the savings will lower a little bit as the employees move through their step increases. I believe Carrie estimated, once everyone's at the top of their step, the estimate was maybe $67,000. So there will still be a savings. It'll go down a little bit because people will be moving through their steps.
So our $195,000 consulting budget, we're getting a network engineer at $116,967, and that's with benefits, I'm assuming.
Correct.
That's the total.
Yes.
On that. And then this GIS manager position is eliminated. How is it that we can manage without a GIS manager position?
What we're doing is we're downgrading the GIS manager position to a GIS analyst. And that position will focus on the technical aspects of the previous GIS manager's position. They will only do technical tasks, not supervisory tasks. The supervisory tasks of the GIS manager is now going to be transferred to the network administrator or network manager position that's now going to become the assistant director.
Okay. The number of persons in your department now is how many?
I believe 17. We're going up by one in this proposal. It's a gain of one position.
Is that one position we're gaining, the senior network engineer?
Yes.
So it's going to be, we're going to increase by one. Does this proposal provide for any additional, I see for yourself, increased pay scale for IT director? Other than yourself, are there any other current employees essentially getting more money as a result of this reorganization?
The only other change would be for the network technicians. I am proposing that two existing network technicians be promoted to a network technician two.
Is my question then, I guess you answered it, there are two people, yourself and two other persons essentially getting more money by reason of this reorganization?
That is correct.
Okay.
And with my increase, I will not be receiving that increase. We include it in the cost out to ensure transparency and to show the true dollars of savings. But that is just based on the encroachment policies of the county. It's a merit step increase, but I don't get that automatically. Bill would have to approve it at my next annual review.
But is that a change in the wage and grade scale or a change in the contract step or what is that?
Correct. As a result of an encroachment issue that exists.
What is an encroachment issue?
What that means is an employee that's being supervised by, let's say, a director or a supervisor. That new employee comes in at a rate that begins to.
The rising tide floats all boats.
Exactly. Soon that person could very well end up making more money than the director is.
Why would we allow subordinates to make more money than a director?
We don't. The wage and compensation program that the county board put in to existence in 2006 actually addresses that issue. And what it does is if certain measures are met, what happens is the supervisor is bumped up to a new level. And then that provides them with an opportunity to continue moving and.
What we're looking at, we just had the juvenile contract we were imposing and that was a big issue, was raises. Is this essentially this '06 policy or procedure that allows for the rising of, I mean, is that something we need to look at? Should we keep doing that? Is that something in line with our philosophy across the board?
Actually, I think there are a number of things related to the wage and compensation study that we probably need to take a look at.
Wouldn't it make sense?
And this is just one of many that we should be reviewing.
I mean, wouldn't it make sense, I mean, everyone wants, that's a big problem. Everyone wants more money. A lot of them deserve more money, but we're telling a lot of people you can't have more money.
Correct.
Isn't it incongruous for us to allow for this element of it, the 46 plus the other two people getting raises? Shouldn't we hold the line on that so that we don't get, so we can go back and fix the other piece of it so we don't get all this upward creep?
Well, one thing to remember is this does not automatically mean that the director and Tiffany will be receiving a raise.
I mean, that's my problem. We don't want to, you know, it gives the signal that it's there and then it's, you know, it's very easy to go there where it seems like we're holding a hard line. I want to be consistent. That's my concern with this. I want to be consistent on that, so.
I think one of the pieces too, Steve, I know the GIS, let's face it, we had three directors in the last three years.
We've been in a cycle.
We've had three GIS directors in the last three years because we weren't in a competitive scale. And.
Well, she's downgrading the GIS to an analyst, right?
When you start, I hate to say techie stuff because I'm not a techie guy, but there's, you know, like the GIS coordinated position that we always had before, we weren't even competitive. And we had a hard time even attracting, retaining, you know, those types of things and.
Well, I agree with that, Jeff. You need to have wages that secure and keep competent people. You need to have a wage scale that depending on what is happening in the real world, meets that need. And it looks to me like this GIS manager is downgraded to GIS analyst, right?
That's correct. Because I want to attempt to stop the cycle.
Right. Evidently, we don't need a GIS manager the way you've got this restructure. All we need is an analyst, correct?
My feeling is that we don't need as many managers in the department. We need more technical staff. So we're going to consolidate the management and supervisory staff and focus on the technical.
If your, Tiffany, if your reorganization plan were implemented without the increased wage piece of it, is that something that you could live with as a department? I know you're going to want to go in there and pull for your people and maybe get this moved up. That's what department heads might like to do, but what you're projecting it would work if we did not increase the wage piece of it, correct?
Bill can attest to the fact that I was very uncomfortable with that part of this proposal. My motivation for doing this was to save money for the county and to provide a better level of service. The increase to my pay is a practice or a policy of the county that I wanted to stay in line with. If the board chooses to change that policy, I am completely comfortable with moving forward.
You are doing a great job and I think the proposal is a good proposal. You explained how we're doing it is in line with things in other departments. That's the only thing that kind of caught my eye and that's why I would suggest we, is that really necessary? Maybe I'll talk to Bill about how this other '06 policy or procedure, I need some more information on that. So that answers my questions. We can move it on, but.
Mr. Chairman? If I could jump in here, I had the same concerns that you did, Commissioner Semasko. I had them earlier today and I spoke with HR. I got with Mr. Kaufman. I picked up a copy of the encroachment policy and I read through it. And when it was all said and done, I was very satisfied that we were moving as the county has set it up for us to move. We are following a policy that is in place. And if we were to change this policy, then that would address the issue that you just questioned.
Do you think that's a good policy? I might like you to copy that myself.
Yep. It's very short. The piece on the encroachment is very short. If you want me to read that into the record.
I'll get with you later on it.
But I'll get you a copy of it if you want. And it satisfied me. I spent about two hours chasing it around today because I wanted to understand. I didn't want to set a precedent that we were giving a raise to somebody that didn't deserve it or that they were taking it themselves or whatever innuendos you wanted to throw at it. And I came away completely satisfied that everything is done as it is supposed to be done based on the policies that are in place. If you want to change this policy, then you could change that. But following this policy, we are moving as we should. I'm satisfied with it today.
And with the network technician two promotions, there's some pay increases there for some staff. One of the things that is a benefit to the county with that increase, not only does it give us a little bit more flexibility in how we do business and within the confines of the union contract, it also gives us the ability to, and this isn't part of this, this isn't costed out in this proposal, but it gives us the ability to push down our on-call rotation to some lower-paid employees. And that, the network technician two will be a part of that on-call rotation. And that saves the county an additional $5,000 a year. So I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you.
Just a couple of comments. You know, we put that pay schedule in place in 2006. You were on the board with, and it seems to have worked really well since then, you know, that part of it. So I'm comfortable, you know, moving, continuing that process. The other thing I would like to say is, you know, 10 years ago, I was trying to think, how many people do we have in IT department? Five?
We've consolidated from a lot of other areas and centralized our services.
Grown a lot.
I don't know that we've grown. I take issue when we are, when, we've consolidated.
The use of the IT department for all of our services throughout the county has grown exponentially.
Absolutely. That is definitely true.
Anyway, you're doing a fine job.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments? Some questions have been raised this evening, but I believe our action tonight is only to send this on to the full board so there is some more opportunity for commissioners to.
Is there a motion?
There is not.
I will make a motion if we send this on to the full board.
Second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Tiffany.
Thank you very much. Next is the library manning table adjustment. And we have amended this motion for final action. So as I'm learning, that means that if you make a motion, it's for a roll call vote tonight. Is that correct?
Motion has to be final action at all.
I'll make a motion and we send it on to the full board.
Final action.
Final action.
What's the need for, why final action?
Allison, would you like to address that for us, please?
Yes.
Was there a support to the motion?
Not yet.
Not yet? Actually, the request for final action is, the library board is hoping that we can get this position filled. We have been without a fourth administrator for quite some time now. And there are projects that are not necessarily postponed, but are delayed due to the amount of work that three people are absorbing versus a fourth person being able to assist.
So before we go any further, can I have a support for this motion?
I would support it.
Thank you. Now, any other questions or comments? We have library director here. Very none. Would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Bohm?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Greata?
Yes.
Commissioner Semasko?
No.
Commissioner Tamiyan?
Yes. Next, we have another proposed change to the manning table, this time for the public guardian.
Is this one also for final action?
This is not. Did I have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. Got to learn who the players are.
You can make the motion so you can discuss it and go either way.
Nobody wants to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. We send it on to the full board.
I'll second that.
Anyone have any questions? I guess I'd like to preface this by saying my figures are a tad off. I did not figure in Medicare and FICA because they're two part-time positions and I was thinking benefits and anyway. So the figures are a tad off and Carrie can attest.
Higher or lower?
My figures are low. It should be a little bit higher.
Carrie have the new figures here?
So the figures Carrie in your memo of the 29th, are the correct figures?
An additional $7,530.
I'd say I'd like your brief comment of why Gary thinks that's justified. What's the basis for that, Gary? What's the benefit to flow from this?
I'm sorry, mister.
The benefit, what's, just a brief comment on why you're recommending this?
Sure. Public Guardian Office is a very small operation. Dave Dove, who used to be the Public Guardian, became the Assistant Public Guardian and he has since retired again from that position. And because Dave was a retiree, he could not work more than 1,000 hours a year. We also had a Public Guardian aide position and that was capped at 1,200 hours a year. And we really needed more hours to be worked. And so when Dave retired for the second time, I looked at our manning table and what we were doing. And by changing the aide position and the assistant position to two case manager positions, we can get more hours from each. They're still part-time positions. We also were able to get an extra $4,000 from Community Mental Health, who currently was giving us $50,000 a year. At the full board meeting, I will be bringing that proposal to you to accept the $4,000 from Community Mental Health. So it was an opportunity for me to increase the hours, still keep it part-time positions and go from there with it.
How many additional, how much additional time do you think we're going to achieve from this, hours actually spent on the cases?
Well.
Just generally, Gary, nothing?
Probably, is it 1,400 hours each, I think, because it'll go up to, right. Because it went from 1,000 and 1,200, so yeah, I think it's, we'll be close to 2,800 hours.
So if we offset the additional 4,000 in revenue from CMH, it brings it down to 3530. And for that 3530 increase, we're going to achieve how many hours, additional hours over what the two eliminated positions were doing? About 700, okay. Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. And Bill, you're recommending this as well?
Now, we have a motion already?
Yes, we do.
Is there further discussion? Any more questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
Now, we have the foreclosed property loan moaning agreement with Kevin's Lawn Care.
Chairman, I move that we send this on to the full board?
Any questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That carries our final new business item. No, we have one more. That's right. The next one is the general fund budget amendments. Carrie, did you want to explain this for us, please?
You have quite a few budget adjustments before you tonight. The great majority of these are grants we have received that the boards already seen. It's just adjusting our budget for the revenues and expenditures and items that you have approved at previous meetings this year. It's formalizing them into the budget. There is a sheet that lists out the detail. Our budget will grow by approximately $1.8 million. And our contingency will go down to approximately $200,000 from $260,000.
So the contingency is going from $260,000 to $200,000?
Correct. Offsetting some of the adjustments you made previous, the county is saving $97,000 this year on the refunding of the administration building debt. There were several revenue adjustments we had to make and timing of grant revenues and expenditures. In some cases, on a reimbursement basis, the money may have been spent in 2012, but we're. we're receiving it in 13.
Now, this, this amendment doesn't adjust for this 4.8% increase we're going to get in revenue sharing yet, does it?
That's for 2014.
That's for '14?
Yes.
How much would that, what?
That 4.8% would be approximately $130,000 to us next year. They haven't posted the final numbers, but that's my best estimate.
Does anybody else have any questions?
I have a question. Carrie, the, you know, we had the situation from the Affordable Healthcare Act and some of the issue with the jail, and that, we did that last month. Part of it, I'm assuming, is that's in here?
Yep, that, that's all addressed in these adjustments here. That plan that was presented to the board is now reflected in a form of budget adjustment.
And did some of the, we call it, the necessary adjustment come from general fund money, or did we find other funds, capital improvement? Where did those monies come from to fix that problem?
Part of it was from the county's contingency. Part of it was the sheriff had proposed some changes, some delays in equipment purchases. And some of it was from the board's economic development funds.
So like where it says here, vehicle purchase adjustments, that was those items?
Yes.
That relates to that?
Yes.
Okay, so that contains all that. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I don't think we have a motion yet.
I would so move to send this on to the full board. Thank you.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, we have the proposed Board of Commissioners 2013 travel meeting schedule.
Mr. Chairman, I move we send it on to the full board. Support?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Questions? Mr. Greata? The dates don't jive with what I had set up earlier in my calendar. I don't know if we're, if I was wrong, or if these are a little bit off. June 20th was just fine, and that seemed to fit. On July 25th, I actually had a budget workshop listed in there. It was that...
I, I had the same thing, I might tell you.
Okay.
I had the 18th as our Board of Commissioners meeting.
Okay.
Thursday, July 18th is the family night at the Blue Water Fest, the boat night thing. So we have historically not had a meeting then?
I don't have a problem moving it, and I just, I just wanna make sure my calendar's correct.
Yeah, I got one for the two.
The 11th?
Okay.
Yeah. The 11th and, and July will be the 11th and the 23rd.
Yeah, we moved the first because of the fourth, so we moved the committee meetings to the 11th. And you wanna free up the 18th?
Yeah, I would, that's a Blue Water, that's the big to-do year and part year and so it could start.
So you wanna move it to the 18th?
No, the 25th.
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 That's what the schedule here does.
All right, that's the schedule that we're getting ready to adopt, so that'll work. But what it doesn't tell us...
Any budget workshops that we had for July, because we set that schedule, what I've done in the past is the budget workshop, we've put a lot of budget workshops in, and then generally we take them off if we don't need them, and I'm assuming that's...
That 531's not gonna happen, right?
No.
Okay, just for clarification then, we, we will not...
July 11th and July 25th.
Yeah, but the July 4th, 4th of July...
There's no meeting.
No meeting. The committee meeting will be the 11th of July.
Right. 11 and 25 now.
11 and 25.
So those of us that had the 18th on our calendar, we can delete that.
Correct.
Correct. I'll update the whole VOC meeting schedule and put it in the packet next week along with this.
And further down, if we're done with July, August 22. I had August 1 and August 15, and I had 22 as a budget workshop. August 1 would be...
My dates might be off.
Committee meeting.
Later, double check on the August thing. We're set on June, or set on July. Double check the August thing, and then we'll get back with us.
Chris, if you wouldn't, if you wouldn't mind, could you also please put that in a separate email?
Yeah.
Because that's where I pick up my calendar.
And I had the same question in August, Chris. You've got 20, or September, you've got 26, and I had 19.
Okay. I'll double check.
All right, yep, so they give us...
We'll have to clue the people now, Casco, if it's different.
None of these people are contacted. The municipalities aren't contacted until after you approve it, in case you want to make changes.
Don't we need to get these dates right right now if we're gonna approve this?
It's going to the full board.
Okay, I'm, all right, I'm good with it. Thank you. All right, good, good discussion.
Do we have a motion?
Yes.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie? So we have any other ways and means, matters to come for us this evening? For information only, we have the Sheboygan County Resolution.
Did Howard put that on?
No, not at Howard.
I'll make the motion to accept items they threw in, information only.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to receive the file?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to adjourn?
Aye.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We are adjourned.
We hope you enjoyed this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. Your St. Clair County Commissioners broadcast these meetings on Comcast Local Access Channel 12 every Wednesday night at 9:00 PM. If you have any questions on any part of this program, please feel free to contact your St. Clair County Board of Commissioners or staff.